How are you?
That was in your shower.
Oh, wait a minute, we haven't. I guess I have to log in on this, though.
Yikes.
Oh, yeah.
I had it all set up and then I forgot to do anything.
There we go. Now, now I'm there.
Pete, you're on. Pete's the only one who's actually ready to do this.
Recording in progress.
Ah, of course.
Of course.
There we go. Get rid of that. Get rid of this. Panelists, usually somebody else. Pete, you're usually the one that gets that before I screw it up. All right. Welcome to the October 7th, 2025 Medfield Select Board meeting. As has often been the case over the past couple of years, this meeting will be held in a hybrid format. The Select Board will attend in person, and members of the public may attend in person. But, and we are happy that we have one member of the public here attending in person. In addition, members of the public who wish to participate via Zoom may do so by joining, by clicking on the link that you can find on the meeting agenda from the town website. And I guess that's about it. I don't actually need to tell the one person here tonight about using the microphones, given that one of them is commemorated to him. Not in honor, not in memory, but in honor of him. All right. And before we start, we'd like to take a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around the globe in defense of our country.
Recording in progress.
Oh, I guess I skipped over that. Thank you. Our town council is pointing out that I did not specifically mention that everybody who is here is being video recorded. We will be, I think, livestreamed this week on Medfield TV as well as having recordings. So just recognize if you're here and you're speaking, you're on camera. Let's see. First thing we have for, the first item is to review the Select Board comments on the strategic town goal document. I guess we can just open up a discussion of that. We have, I had a set of comments, and I think Pete, you also had a set of comments.
I did. So I just have questions that we can talk through as we go through this.
Yep. And most of my comments were, the vast majority of my comments were wordsmithing type things, but a couple were not. So I guess we'll just walk our way through the section, each of the, each of the pages, and comment on things that need to be commented on. And I'm gonna, I will suggest we skip over the wordsmithing things if they are truly just editorial, unless somebody has a difference of opinion on that. So.
Like, the first one, just silly, like, I know we have financial stewardship, but like, just for, if people, if residents are gonna read it, that's just financial management. That's what it is, right? Like, it's, I mean, it's just very straightforward.
Stewardship for me means more than simply, you can manage a pretty, you can, you could manage a pretty wasteful town budget as long as you manage it and don't lose the money. Stewardship has a little more, the idea that you're not just simply managing your money. You're actually making sure the money is used in a way that's really in the interest of the taxpayers. That there's, you know, there's a certain quality to my thinking.
All right, all right. I'm just kinda, I'm like, I don't, I don't, I want, if residents read this, I don't wanna bring them down a hole. It's like, let's keep it simple, to the point.
Yep.
And I think what's nice is the strategy does, is followed up by action items. So if people are like, what do you mean? It's like, well, here, we'll look at the action items and do they align with the strategy.
Okay. So we have five.
I'm gonna pause for one second. Mike, I'm getting some comments that the audio is too echoey.
Is what someone's mic is off?
Okay. Can everybody make sure their mics are off on their?
Mine's off.
It should be off.
I can see by my speaker.
Audio says off.
Audio off.
Like, just look at your speaker, and if it has an X three, you should be good to go.
And Pete, what you actually could do, Pete, is just me, yeah, there you go, you just did it.
Yep, there we go.
And.
Okay, let's see.
Try that. Testing one, two, three. Are we doing better?
Let's see. Much better. There we go. Okay.
All right. So let me jump down. We have five bullets on strategy. I think, Pete, you had comments on my comments.
I did.
Yeah. Your question around grants and user service fees was where, my, and the reason I put in what I put in on the second bullet, to say reduce reliance on the residential tax base for revenues by either diversifying the tax base or building revenue positive housing, I added the item, or identifying additional sources of non-tax revenue for the town. So in other words, you don't just have to diversify the tax base or build housing. You actually could also find ways to raise money outside of the tax, the tax pool to cover some of the things we're doing for the town. And what I put there as an example was grants or potentially user service fees. The only one that I think I've heard around user service fees that said, repeated discussions but no change, I think, has been the bus fees that the schools have talked about. In terms of any concrete thing that's been on the table, I think it's the bus fees about the only thing that I've heard of. Though, I guess you could say the transfer station sticker fees, which is something we did increase. So that would be another example of a non-tax version of raising money for the town to help pay for town operations.
Right. Well, and would, I know the planning board is talking about mixed use, retail bottom, residential up top. That's a creative way to make better space, especially if it's downtown.
Yeah, yeah, that would be a good zoning step to help make it easier to do some of the diversification. Yep.
Okay. Because this was a tough one, because you balance the, you know, we, obviously taxes, we don't want them to go up, but there's almost, can't avoid that year over year, right? And then we can't, we don't wanna tax our businesses because we don't have that many of them, so we've gotta balance that. And then, you know, even the fees, you don't wanna, you know, continue to hit people with fees unless they see the value. And I think, like, transfer station you just mentioned, I think there's value in that. Like, it's, what's it, $55 a year now, and that's to $110. That's, that's significantly less than if you were having pickup at the end of your driveway once a week.
Yeah, what I was, I don't, not, I'm not suggesting this is a good answer, but, or is a good example, but, you know, over the years, we've had a lot of people from across the town who are looking for sidewalks. As a practical matter, the amount of sidewalks people would like us to build far exceeds the amount of money that we have in our taxes to pay for. So if it was critical enough, you know, I don't, I'm not saying this is a good idea. I'm just trying to visualize if people that were not in the core that's being targeted for the expansion of sidewalks said, I don't care, I want a sidewalk on my street, and there was a way to have that be privately funded or something like that, in order to get people what they want, to pay, if they're willing to pay for what they want, so much the better. In some ways, you could.
It could be the subject of a better.
Sure.
There you go.
Yeah, well, and so there may be, that's my point. There may be some ways to get at that if people are serious enough. In many ways, the Hinckley Playground is an example of something that ultimately the town would have probably gotten around to building, but by the time that happened, the mothers who were stepping forward would have had kids getting out of college. And so they stepped forward, they, they started the fundraising. I'm gonna say this with quotes. Fortunately, the COVID pandemic hit, and suddenly we had sources of federal funds that we wouldn't have otherwise had.
Right.
And so we got that done. So anyway, that was the point on that. Pete, on your comments down on the final bullet, that was the Community Preservation Act. I've, I've had the position all along that if we are gonna do, I'm perfectly happy to restructure our ta, our tax structure to incorporate revenues coming in through the Community Preservation Act. If that, if we have to do that in order to get the state to provide some degree of matching funds, which is an added revenue source, I'm fine with that. The only thing I've been against is using that as a backdoor tax increase by keeping all of our taxes the same and then tacking this one on and go, oh, this is a windfall. So my point, and if the, if the taxpayers don't care, if they say, no, we really want to give you more taxes, then I'm fine with us just having that be the windfall. But I've been looking for the structure to go ahead and put that on the table, let people do that. And then separately, you know, decide or express their opinions on whether they want the Prop 2.5 override limit to drop down by the amount that the Community Preservation Act revenues have bumped. The part that we're putting in, I'm not talking about the part with the state match, but the part that we're putting in, if, do we want that to offset?
I like that.
Christine, I think, has raised, raised the concern that if you put both of those articles on the same town meeting warrant, you run the risk of having people say, we like the idea of a Prop 2.5 underwrite to reduce the tax limit, and we're not prepared to approve the Community Preservation Act. I don't know how likely that would be, but I would be okay putting the Community Preservation Act in, in one year and then carrying the underwrite article the following year, if the Community Preservation Act. So I, I can see a way we could move ahead making with the Community Preservation Act. But as opposed to simply not worrying about whether it's revenue neutral, I'm not on board with that. So that's.
And I just think it makes it too complicated to try to do your weave to add in the tax reduction for the amount that we're getting matched by the state. So I think that we just need to ask the people to trust the town government to not spend the money foolishly. I mean, the whole reason that we would do this would be to get the state matching monies. That's the only reason to do it, so.
But I don't, I, I'm not a big proponent of backdoor taxes.
But isn't the concern that I've heard in the past?
Backdoor taxes, you're telling them upfront that this is what we're gonna do, and we're doing it because we get a state match money that we don't otherwise get.
But Pete, I've heard in the past, and I could be wrong with this, is that part of the concern with the, the, the money that comes from the state is, and they may have changed this, but they dictate it's these three buckets and it can be this percentage. And if we've done, like, you know, we were gonna do the Habitat for Humanity home, and everyone's like, well, we're already at enough homes, why? Right? So if we're already at a certain point, and we have money set aside, and we don't really have the activity to spend, what are we doing with that money? So I just wanna make sure if we take the money, that we are able to spend it, or we have more control over it, and we're not dictated as to where it has to go, when we might not have a reason.
There are required, three, required buckets that you'd have to spend on.
10% of local revenues have to be allocated to each of the three purposes.
But if you look at those three purposes, historically, we've always spent money on those three purposes. So that's the other thing. You, you wouldn't do the Community Preservation Act unless historically you have been spending money in those three areas anyway, and we have. So I don't think that that's a, an issue, really.
I've, I've come around to agreeing with Pete about that basic, those categories, because you can put it in the bucket and never, you know, and not, not spend it, you just have to allocate it. When this came up years ago, the second argument against that was, the problem is, but if you have a bucket with a lot of money in it, people will come up with ideas for how to spend that money, where they might, the town might not have spent any money, they might not have spent any money in that way had there not been a bucket with a bunch of money in it.
Right.
Again, that's a place where I agree with Pete. I think maybe we can sit there and say, look, you can trust us to hold the line on, or to ask you to trust us to hold the line on that.
Okay.
Bill?
Hi, Bill Masaro, Evergreen Way. I, I've spoken mostly against a rush to the CPA for probably, it must be, what, eight, nine years now? Whenever it first came up at town meeting and got rejected and everything else. And my issue again was the issue of having to spend it and to put it into the three buckets. They're still there, the last time I checked, because when I saw your goals, I looked at, you know, called up the CPA and looked at it, and I saw that stuff was basically still there. I understand you don't have to spend it all at once and everything else, but I didn't raise any questions when I first read your goals, because if I read the goals correctly, it's establish a committee to go in and see if, in fact, where we need, first off, where do we need the money? And are we able to get the big, best bang for the buck in the categories where we need it? So, I mean, if, if that's your goal, to have the committee do that, I mean, I have no objections to it. And that's where I've been coming from all along, is find out whether we can use it, whether we need it. We certainly don't need it for affordable housing, or at least we won't in a couple of years. So.
The one other thing that I think happened with those three buckets, from what, how they were defined when we first looked at it, is the state has broadened the allowed uses. So it's, the bucket is still there, but the definition of allowable uses suddenly broadened it enough.
Recreation.
Like, recre, that was the big thing for me, suddenly open space included.
Doesn't have to be land, the land doesn't have to have been purchased with CPC funds in the first place. It could be existing land or facility, and you can, for instance, upgrade a playground.
So we spend nothing on our, on our conservation properties, and we probably should be. We don't spend it because we don't have it.
So the only thing I just throw out there without getting involved in this discussion is because of the restricted uses of CPA funding, if you're gonna look at an underwrite that's gonna affect your operational budget, you'd have to look very carefully at what kind of a deficiency and where that was created, because you might not be able to use the CPA funds to make that up.
Yeah, so if that's true, so it's worth looking at, but if that's true, then that says, but for the fact that we have CPA funding, we wouldn't do any of these things. So if that's true, then I don't think we wanna do it, because that's just adding new things for the town to do. I don't think that's true based on how the, you know, again, to Pete's point, the town has spent money in all of these areas, the town has lists of unmet wants in these areas. So it's not an issue of, well, gee, but the underwrite is gonna, the, the underwrite is because you're getting the money that would have been in the budget coming in through the CPA funds. And I, and I'm not trying to get the underwrite to include the match. The strategy here is restructure the tax so that our tax structure doesn't change, but we do get this additional shot in the arm from the state matching fund. So I'm not going after, I'm not trying to get the state to let us lower our taxes, you know, against the total. I want the increment, the match, I want to be additional. But the other piece of it, which is an added tax on people, and there's a good argument for it, because that money comes from the registry, so when anybody files any real estate documentation or anything like that, they are paying for that.
Yeah, Medfield pays into that, and we have for years, and we just haven't gotten anything back because we didn't adopt the CPA.
And it's, it was what, I don't know if you remember, Pete, it's 100, 150,000, 175. The registrar always sends every year a list, and I think Medfield is around 150. Yeah, basically saying, here's the money that would have gone to each of the CPA, each community, if you have adopted the CPA. And I think Medfield, for the last couple of years, has either been 150,000 or 175,000.
I think that what he sends is the amount of additional tax, filing fees that you've paid in by town.
What he's giving you and what you would actually get under the CPA, there's a disconnect there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So he's just talking about, well, he's collected the goals.
He's talking about what you collect. Simplistically, oh, gee, that's money that I'm out. However, there's a completely separate formula and calculation to determine what you get. And I've kind of raised that issue with him before, that that's not.
And Mark is hugely knowledgeable about this, because he chaired the Medway's CPA committee for years. Do you still do that? Still do. So probably a decade or 15 years now of it.
I will add, over 20. The, the bucket, the affordable housing bucket, it's actually community housing, is defined. Both Medway and Franklin have used CPA funds to fund nonprofits to build senior affordable rental units.
Group homes is another area that needs financing to be able to be viable.
So, and it's good that you have that background, Mark. I guess what I'm trying to say is where, in past years, like Bill, I just kind of said, no, I don't like the way this is lining up. When I, personally, when I learned that the bucket definitions had been broadened some, and I could envision that the town really does spend money on things that are in each of these budgets, in buckets. I'm open to having, in fact, I think it's, it would be a good idea for us to do it. What I was, what I've been trying to protect is to not do that in a way that pulls the wool over the taxpayers' eyes, but just introducing this other little thing that doesn't count in Prop 2.5.
I guess what I would.
If they say we don't care, I'm, I'm good with that. I just wanna make sure.
Gus, what I would say to you is that these things that we're gonna do with the CPA monies are things, they're not extras. They're things that we're gonna do anyway. And we're not just doing them because we get some state matching money. And so that, you know, to try to do some sort of tight trading of the, of the tax rate to take money out over here because you're getting CPA money from the state over here, I think that just complicates it way too much, and that, and that.
It's not that hard.
No.
You have the CPA, and you have an underwrite that people can either say we want or not.
Yeah.
It's pretty straightforward.
I think it's thoughtful, more than anything. I mean, it's.
It's, I got more to, I'm not, I'm more interested in being honest with the taxpayers, because to be honest, in the next couple of years, I am very concerned about what the tax, you know, we're fighting a big tide between the schools, the healthcare costs.
A 20-year capital budget for the buildings is 120 million?
That's an unmet need. The labor, labor, direction of labor costs, I think, is gonna go up. With all of those things facing us in the next decade, let's say, the idea that we're just gonna throw in a couple of, oh, this is a different structure, we'll just throw it in. It's like, I'm, if, if the taxpayers say that's good, then if they complain down the road, I can say, you had your chance not to do it, and you said it was okay. So that's, that's, I mean, we can, I'm pretty, what I'm trying to say is I can see a way for us to move forward on this, Christine, that would address your, I understand the mechanical concern. I'm not all the way over to where Pete is about, don't worry about it, it's too hard to figure out. I think actually.
No, I think, I think the message to the community is that we're not just willy-nilly adding taxes. It's a very thoughtful approach, and if people say, don't overthink it, okay, then not. But at least that, that option's on the table, and I think it's, it's very thoughtful.
Right. And, and part of why I've become sensitive to this is because right now, at the, within MMA, I'll talk more about this on the Select Board Report, but I also on NPR this morning, I, I heard Michelle Wu is saying that the state, that we need to figure a way to overturn Prop 2.5. We can't live with Prop 2.5. You know, every, if people's wages are going up 5% a year, then I'm in favor, at some point after that's happened, of pushing for overrides, because it's appropriate for the town's spending to, to track with people's earnings. But when people's wages aren't going up more than 2.5% a year, then when we go for an override, what we're telling people, the taxpayers, is what we're telling them is, we have a better idea of how you should be spending your money than you do. And that's the, you know, it can happen, but that's the circumstance that I think should be a very rare conversation.
Well, and we're getting squeezed, because the state is basically sharing less revenue with us every year. So they're basically moving things that were on the state budget to our residential property tax bases.
Although something, like right now, the education formula, we're, we're dropped to $150. There, the state does some things to try to offset that. I, I don't disagree with your basic point. If you looked at what we got from the state 20 years ago, Pete, we, I did, I went back to the 90s, and I looked at our budget. I just did a gross analysis. 30% of the town's budget was state funds. In 2000 or so, it was 20%. So, anyway, okay.
It's getting smaller by the minute, literally by the minute.
Okay.
So we probably have some work to do there around, I'm basically still looking for the develop a tax-neutral approach. I don't have a problem, Pete, between you not wanting to do it all and me wanting to do it, to carrying that as explore options for a tax-neutral approach, so that we don't, we don't definitively, you know, demand that it be done. I'm okay with that.
It's also not an all or nothing. It's up to 3%, but you're gonna determine less than that.
Right. Yeah. Although part of me says if you're, you gotta do it.
If you're gonna do it, you might as well get the big match.
You might as well do the 3%, but that makes my point more.
The advantage of the 3% is the state match has gone down and down and down. And when there isn't enough money to go around, those communities at 3% get to participate in added rounds, which add up significantly.
Right. So that, when that's come up before, that was my view, is like, if you're, if you're gonna do it, don't do it halfway. Do it all the way, unless, unless you can literally say, ah, but this is getting us so much more money than we ever would.
My other feeling about the Community Preservation Act is that it's, it's not something we need to study any further, to be honest. I wouldn't appoint a committee. I would just put it on the annual town meeting warrant and, and then have an explanation of it. It's not the complex.
Ballot question, too.
Yeah, but I wouldn't spend time with a committee studying it.
So I think that.
Again, because we already did that.
I think somebody that championed it. Yeah, I, I think, I think to assume that we've done it four, five, six, seven years ago, we can do it again with seeing what happens in the town. I think, again, it's thoughtful to educate people on why we're doing it, right? And, and if they, if, if the education is done right, people buy in because we're giving them the information, they're like, oh, I get it. But to just make the assumption, well, we can throw it on the ballot, that's a formula for disaster, because then you're gonna have the red herrings, and everyone's gonna make, they're gonna have all these falsities. It, it doesn't hurt to put people.
I would say to that, Eileen, to have an education campaign is fine, but you don't need a committee to do an education campaign.
Need to call grassroots coalition from all the areas benefited from CPA.
Yeah. This is work behind us.
Educate for it.
Yeah.
That's how most municipalities is successful to get it through.
I'm not, I'm not sure if we're arguing as much as it sounds like we are, Pete. The, the committee, somebody has to do that education.
Yeah.
This is a committee that I don't have any problem appointing people who are CPA proponents. And it's like, listen, because there are some decisions, you have to, you know, the fact that we just had a two, 30-second informal discussion about 3% versus 1% doesn't mean anybody's made a decision that we even know. So I can see that committee being that education committee you're talking about. They don't, as proponents of this, but I think some of the mechanics and some of the arguments need to get out there before people are asked.
There are very good online resources about the CPA. It's very easy to get information about.
But if it has to be a ballot question, and we don't do it right, it's just a failure. Like, I, I just look at it as, we just assume people are gonna say yes, hasn't happened in the past, and I don't see it's gonna happen in the future unless we bring people, you know, like Mark, all of the knowledge that you have from just seeing what you've done in the last 20 years. I mean, you've seen how it's evolved. All that adds.
You know, if you look at my background, Medway never spent any money on open space. It had the least open space, protected open space in eastern Massachusetts. It never spent money on the other purposes either. And at the time it was introduced, it was 100% match from the state. And we got 100% match for at least the first two-thirds before it started to drop off precipitously. So we were in a perfect position, and everything worked right. But there was a tremendous coalition of people, newer people to town with those, with that background to push it.
Mark, hasn't, hasn't the state taken steps to supplement the pool?
They increased the amount at the registry significantly. However, since COVID, that hasn't come back. Plus, more and more towns or municipalities have opt for the CPA. On top of which, until recently, the state would also inject big chunks of capital, like $100 million. They haven't done that the last few years. So the match that's projected for this year is pretty low. I think it's well below 30%.
We might get one goal every hour.
Well, no, I don't think we'll snag up on all of them. This is, this is one I, I know, Pete, you've been a proponent. Well, no, I don't think we'll snag up on all of them. This is one, I know, Pete, you've been a proponent for this for a long time. So, might need a little wordsmithing on figuring out how to take what Pete and I just had, and Eileen, for a conversation. I hope it's helpful to say I'm happy around the exploring revenue, tax-neutral, as opposed to demanding it. So, there's probably a way to soften that that would work.
Let me, just so, if I may, just to clarify, because this is a misconception, and I won't try to argue it's not a tax because it looks like a tax, it smells like a tax, blah, blah. However, it's a surcharge. It's not three percent on your tax rate. It's three percent of what you pay in taxes with a one-hundred-thousand-dollar exemption. One, you take one hundred of your value off, you take the remaining amount, and you determine your taxes, and you figure another three percent surcharge. So, it's, it's been relatively modest before real estate market prices went crazy. That's impacted that.
Okay, let me, let me put something together on that one.
Mark, have any towns ever repelled it? Has anyone ever started it, and it said we won't?
Not that I'm aware of.
But you can, I think.
I would think you could, yeah.
Well, you can, but if you, if you go into something and you commit to, you can also borrow against future earnings, so you can leverage it. So, if you've got a big project, you can leverage it. And once you're borrowing, you can no longer repeal CPA to the extent it's required to service that debt. So, it also provides some protection for CPA going forward.
Okay, that makes sense.
And then, at the very bottom of that page, I put the, on the last bullet there under action items, the last bullet was develop an affordability metric tied to key economic metrics to quantify the maximum tax burden residents should be expected to pay for town services. My comment was, this is an action that needs to combine town. To the extent we were saying town services is distinct from school services, it's got to be, it's got to be the full town and school, not just town.
Yeah, I can, I'll make that change. But I think that Pete had a question on it, one up, up above, when it was a strategy.
Well, that whole tax burden threshold and this affordability metrics, I just am not sure what that even means or how you would define that, so I just wasn't sure.
So, all the more reason to put it in here because if we have no means of determining or defining what we consider to be affordable taxes, then we've got no control over, you know, we all have opinions about what the size of the budget should be, but there's no objective way of expressing the, you know, of evaluating people's individual opinions. What is, the issue around affordability is, we've got, right now, we're in the top twenty percent of most expensive towns.
Twenty percent, we're the top twenty towns.
Well, yeah, and once we put in the school project, we'll be back in the mid-teens, I assume. The question is, you know, are we okay when we're twelfth most expensive town? Or do we, do we want to put a limit that says we don't ever want to let ourselves be more than the sixteenth most or the twentieth most expensive? Are we really?
Yeah, well, and then that discussion is, who are you going to let go? Because our budget is all salaries, for the most part, and so that you're, what services do people want to forego?
Well, that falls in line with one of the ones later in this where we talk about when we hire, we need to educate that that's a cost going forward, that, you know, if we take money from the state to do something, three years later, it's on us, right? I mean, like even the SAFRA grant for the police, that's a big one, right? We've signed off on that, but we've got to see when it comes to fruition, can we afford to keep them going?
And Pete, you're right. One of the questions could be, if we, because we do have a lot of labor costs, if you are really in a crunch, who are you going to let go? But there's a second question that goes with that. Who are we going to drive out of town? Because not everybody, retirees don't have the kind of revenue growth. There are, who do we even prevent from coming to town? There's young families that don't necessarily have two-six-figure wage earners. They can't come here, and maybe through 40B they can get here, but outside of that, they can't get here just as a homeowner. So, we are making decisions about what kind of a town we're creating-
We are.
-if you're not careful about that. So, I mean, I don't have an immediate affordability metric to offer here, but it's like, I think it's worth it. How do you know when you're spending more than you really should?
I don't mind thinking about it, but I don't know that you can create such a metric, and I think that's a very complicated issue. So, but I-
Well, so, that's all, that's all I had in mind here was work on developing it. I didn't say implement something or even incorporate it into our financial policies to drive budgets. It's just a matter of, let's define. Part, in some ways, Pete, I think the discussion around what the metrics should be is almost more valuable than the actual final metric that you get to.
Sure, okay, let's have the discussion then.
Yeah.
So, one of the things that's occurred to me when we were talking about user fees, for instance, I think, I want to do things to encourage seniors to keep living in Medfield because every time a senior moves out of their four-bedroom house in Medfield, there's going to be a family that's going to move in that's going to have kids. And so that we're going to have increased school costs. Each child costs us, I'm not quite sure what per child now, is it thirty thousand a year, twenty-five thousand a year?
Eighteen thousand?
But it's, you know, it's expensive for the, for the town. So, I think it behooves the town to spend a little money to encourage the seniors to stay. I think in one easy way on, on, on user fees would be to, you know, give them a discount on something like a transfer station sticker. I would also tilt the tax rate, and I would have the, do what Wayland and Sudbury have done, and actually have the other people in town pay part of the taxes for this, for a certain group of seniors who have been in town long enough and have paid a huge amount in because they've been in town a long time. I would give them a break to keep them in town, so. Bill doesn't like that, I see.
No, Bill, no, I think-
Oh, he wants it.
Full disclosure, that probably would help at least two of us on this board, as it is. But Pete, the first part that you described about trying to come up with discounted rates for seniors for some things like transfer stickers, I think that's definitely worth, you know, evaluating, considering. I, I've always had a philosophical problem with artificially lowering the rates for seniors because I think for many towns, it's a ploy to get the votes that would be against expensive capital projects. Well, people that you're, people that are getting to vote on budget decisions that don't have any implications for their vote are going to be more inclined to say, yeah, go beat yourself silly.
Right, right.
What do I care? And I have a problem with that. The other problem that I have is if you look at what the state has done, 40B, ten percent of our, our housing is 40B. MBTA communities, at some point, you know, maybe thirty years from now, suddenly there's going to be a lot of relatively lower-cost housing because that's what the state wants to see. Accessory dwelling units, that thing scares me to death. The only thing is, I'm thinking that Millis is going to get it sooner because the real estate investors that want to convert homeowner properties to two-income-stream rental properties are going to be able to get cheaper real estate to do that in Millis. And the difference in rent isn't going to be enough. They'll make better, they'll make better profits in Millis before they're going to get profits here, but I'm scared to death of where that thing's coming. And then Senator Feeney just announced, which is something that is beneficial, I guess, to seniors, is if seniors sell their three- or four-bedroom house and then buy another house in Massachusetts, he's pushed through legislation that comes, comes with a ten-thousand-dollar tax credit. So, it's another incentive to get seniors who live in multi-family, multi-bedroom houses, like I do right now, to leave and go for the tax credit to accelerate the turnover into multi-bedroom houses for families. So, suddenly what you have is a lot of groups of people who have ways to get relatively affordable homes in Medfield who aren't paying the cost of education. So, who is going to pay the cost of education?
I think there's a federal proposal to increase the capital gains deduction on the sale of primary residences, too. It's a, it's a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand per person, five-hundred thousand per couple now, and I think it's, they're proposing to up it to a million for a couple to-
Probably will because the price of the housing, yeah.
But the reason for that supposedly is to get people out of their houses-
Right.
-so that other people can come in and fill, and fill the houses. And, and right now, you're looking at, it's basically doubling what you can take for a-
And that's not unreasonable, but when we have so many programs that provide subsidized housing, so that, you know, Habitat for Humanity, I asked about that. I said, well, so it's locked in at a lower price, but that means the assessment is locked in at that lower price. So, somebody who moves in, who has two or three kids going to the school, coming here because Medfield has great schools, eventually what happens is Medfield will have to move toward average schools because the proportion of the affluent people and the ones that aren't is going to shift.
Can we get from Marion a rough statistic on, what I see happening in Medfield? And I've witnessed it with my immediate brother and friends that soon as kids get out of high school here, they're gone. So, it's not the same. So, that family that just put their kids through the Medfield school system, like Pete, you were saying it's the older, they just put four through, now you have a new family that comes in, and it's the same four that just left. So, it's just, I think that is where most of the turnover in this town is, is that-
It's always-
It's always been there.
It always has, right? So, so the seniors continue to stick around. Like, I'm not married, I've never put, I don't have any kids, other than my little furball down there. I've never put anyone through Medfield school system, yet I've never said no to the, to the votes, right? So, when you look at some of the people in this town, right, forty-nine years, twenty-five years, you know, I would love to be able to give a benefit for someone that says same address, X number of years, constantly, you know, paying into the town, but to what you're saying, and I totally get it, Gus, is then you get to that slippery slope where I'm saying, I'll say yes to anything because it's not costing me anything, and then what burden are we putting on, on the younger residents? It's kind of like, I've, you know, I always want to say, well, why am I paying taxes for the school? Like, I'm not getting anything out of it, right? Well, I am because of my, the value of my home, in theory, is at least staying at a decent price because people want to move here, but it's, it's a tough conversation because-
And we know there are retirees who have moved out of town because they just get too expensive for it to be here.
Educate and evacuate.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get out, and they go to Cape, and you pay a chump change, and you get great services down in Falmouth and Dennis.
No, walk in Franklin. You don't go, you know, they don't have to go to the Cape, they go-
Well, they're looking for affordable housing, more affordable housing.
More tax.
They go to Riverside or whatever it's called there.
Low tax.
And, I mean, and that's, part of the problem is, I mean, you know, we're, we need, we need less expensive housing in Medfield. And the way that, I think that should be one of our policies as a town government is to try to encourage the building of twelve-hundred-square-foot houses so that those are houses for a couple or for a millennial couple. And that's what we don't have in town, is we've got all these four-bedroom houses.
You could put a twelve-hundred-dollar home on Meta Common Street, and you get into a bidding war, right? You might say it's only worth six-hundred thousand, but a house is only worth what someone's willing to pay for it?
Well, you can, you can zone it, but I don't think that's the way to do it. I think what you do is you take parcels of land that the town owns, like up at the hospital, the Arboretum, or that parcel B that's south of Hospital Road, the twelve acres we're talking about there, and you, and you develop those as twelve, you know, twelve-hundred-square-foot homes.
How do you define the price?
That's what we tried-
You can't. You can't define the price.
The house is so far in Hinkley South.
That's what we tried, that's what we tried to do on Hinkley South, yeah.
It's fictitious to think like, I'm going to build a small home-
Well, in Hinkley South, you screwed up because you didn't, you didn't-
No, the fact is that real estate went up, and, and you, we can't control that. So, to have this fairy tale of like, oh, if we build a small home, people will only pay four-hundred thousand. No, if somebody says, I want to be in Medfield, and this is brand-new, and all the, everything's, like, we can't put a cap on it. That's a scary part.
So, I think the Hinkley South houses failed because they're too big. And, and they, I don't know whether they're real second floors or whether they're phony second floors.
They're not phony.
They're expansion areas, and so that-
No, they can't do that. We covered that.
There's some where he just did domers just to give it so it wasn't just all flat roofs. But at the end of the day, you know what he intended to sell it for. And then the market shifted, and, you know, he put it on for seven, and people bid it up to eight-sixty. That's not his fault. I mean, people want to be in this town. They, they're sixty-two, they love that location. They're across from, from PT, they're across from a-
Oh, yeah, yeah, and, and I think there are either two or three Medfield families that moved in. So, that in terms of providing housing for seniors in Medfield to downsize into as a total failure, it's a huge win for the town because there's no services provided there, and we're getting probably five, six-hundred thousand a year in profit of property taxes out of those twenty-four units. So, it's like Old Village Square. It's a, it's a moneymaker for the town, but-
But Old Village Square sadly didn't help with our 40B at all. It only hurt us. Whereas at least when Enclave was built, that actually helped, you know, they, he did it in step with 40B. So, that's the one thing we've changed, thank God, since, I think, two thousand seventeen. You can't just come in and build a monstrosity of condos and then just continue to send our water tide-
Well, the way that, the way that Hinkley South could have been a real win for the town is if it had been built as a rental, and then we would have gotten credit for all twenty-four units. We wouldn't be dealing with eighty-six Plain Street 40B at this point. We'd be in safe harbor, but we didn't do it that way.
It could have or should have. Like, we could have bought Montrose, but we didn't. As a town, we let Montrose and-
We should have bought Montrose, yes. It was a big mistake.
And you could have sold the Arboretum to-
But it wasn't on the market back then.
Well, I bought it. We should have rezoned it so that it-
Well, actually-
Seventy-eight units.
What you, what the town was concerned about at that place was multifamily housing. And they viewed, when they couldn't get-
At which place?
No, I'm trying to think of the guy who owned the industrial park there.
Facility?
No, no, it was in Brookline. When they couldn't get more industrial, Tofias. When they couldn't get-
You're talking about the Montrose site then, okay.
Right. They couldn't get industrial commercial in there. It was like, oh, my God, we're going to end up with multifamily housing. So, they actually viewed the school as dodging the board, so.
There were, every, all the builders wanted to, all the developers wanted to do the mixed use. They wanted to do the retail on the first floor and the condos on the two floors above it, but the town wasn't willing to consider that at the time, so.
Twenty-twenty-five, now we are.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Can we go to the next page? I think some of these are, let's see, Pete, we've already, we've already beat to death the tax-neutral approach CPA, so let's move past that.
Yeah.
But there's a second, under the action steps, Christine, on the second page. Whatever you do the first page, probably, I said.
Yeah, I will.
And Maria can come in and give us an update. I mean, the director of land use, she's already way ahead of this, what parcels they're looking at and-
Yeah, we're just going to call it, we're just going to rename that to their mixed-use zoning project.
But I think something to think about there, too, and maybe it even affects a couple of the other goals coming down, is we know in this town that there are very large parcels of land that will eventually change hands, whether it's in two years, whether it's in twenty years. And that is what then changes what, what large housing development could potentially go in, right? And so, that's where, you know, we need to really think about from a financial stewardship, is there land that we would love to be able to be squirreling money away for because we get ahead of it, and that prevents a four-hundred, you know, mini-division, multi, home subdivision?
Speaking personally, after the Hinkley project didn't turn out the way I thought it would, I have concluded, speaking for myself at least, that as a town official, I do not have the requisite real estate development skills to know how, so far, there have been very few purchases by the land, by the town that, in my view, have been turned into the thing that they were supposed to be turned into when we either convince the taxpayers to buy them-
And I didn't mean it that way to-
Other than open space.
I didn't mean it to us to be developers. It's just this big chunks of land that if we don't get ahead of what could open up, we will lose control.
Like, what big chunks are you talking about?
Along 109. There's a couple of big chunks along 109.
Okay.
Across from Shaw's, there's about a nineteen-acre parcel that Bob Meany's family has.
And I, you know, I know in working with, with Maria, or maybe it was Sarah back in the day, you know, even when you look at levels, like, there's a lot of land that could-
The Browns have a big parcel, I know, along that stretch. I mean, a lot of it's controlled by zoning, so that, you know-
Trustees of reservation, too.
If we're-
But they're not going to sell the land for development.
They can't. It's Article ninety-seven.
Right. So, I, it's worth being mindful of all those things. I've just become more skeptical about taking town money. Look, because, only because we don't get, for me, the Hinkley property, what I really thought was going to be done there was the, the town, a couple, or the state, five years ago at the MMA Annual Meeting, came up with this concept that was called the Village Concept, which was, you know, twelve, fifteen, twelve-hundred to fifteen-hundred-square-foot, single-floor cottages that were four, four, you know, it was like a rectangle.
Sarah Reposa was showing us, Sarah Reposa was showing us, at the same time that we're, that you guys were considering Hinkley South, she was showing us pictures of those things.
But, but what, what the Affordable Housing Trust said is, we couldn't do that because we couldn't, the only way you could get the density on zoning under the laws was through 40B. So, you couldn't just say, we're going to build twelve affordable units here because of the zone, the density.
They turned down the opportunity to rezone that for multifamily. That's why, by default, it had to be done by 40B.
All I know is that that's what I-
The town meeting had rejected that.
That, that's what I was hoping, maybe they wouldn't have rejected if they'd seen what the plan would have been, but-
They did, though.
All I know is- All I know is, it didn't turn out the way I was hoping it would turn out.
I don't think so.
Let's keep going, moving right along. I think, Pete, I see your comments, I think, were simply pointing out things that I'd added. The only one you said is already implicit is the idea under the second bullet, ensure adequate funding of the ongoing maintenance and upkeep of the town's transportation, water, and sewer infrastructure. I added, through the proactive long-term management of, of the town's water and sewer rates. The reason I put that in there was to encourage the water and sewer departments to move in the direction that we were already in when Willis Paligian was on the Water and Sewer Board. Where he had, he had come up with a, as I recall, a thirty- or fifty-year spreadsheet model, where he was able to project the capital. And what it allowed him to do is he smoothed, if you do it that way, and you see where it is, to keep a steady amount of capital available, you only have to make small incremental rate changes, because you're making them proactively enough that they, they kick in over a number of years, rather than making the more radical rate changes that you make when you're maybe working off a ten-year timeframe. We had it, I really liked it, that's for sure. And then I don't think, I think we're, I think the Water and Sewer Board may be moving in that direction again. But I don't think we are back where we once were. So that's, that's the reason.
I mean, Willis created a, just a very sophisticated, remarkable tool. I think everybody called it a tool. I think it was probably just a huge spreadsheet. And, and he populated it with public data.
Right.
Because Mike Sullivan wouldn't give him the data, apparently. And even when the select board ordered Mike Sullivan to give him the data, Mike wouldn't give it to him because, unfortunately, Mike didn't want to share it. So, but I think we're in a different situation now in terms of the data. And I think the select, the, the Water and Sewer is doing that, same sort of protection now.
And I've had a couple of conversations about, I think, one of the differentiators of Medfield right now, I hope, is that people who are considering coming to work for us recognize that Medfield's offering at, at least as good a professional development opportunity for someone who's interested in pursuing a career in public, you know, in, in local government. So I, I added that just to acknowledge, we consider retention a big deal.
Okay.
Is this Mike doing this stuff here?
Are we good, Mike?
He's still, I think the screen, he's using AI companion and all kinds of stuff there.
No, no AI, that's cheap. There we go. Yeah.
All right. Is that enough on page two? Yes.
I think I'm, I'm, I'm good on, on changing that.
Okay. Page three. Again, I think these were all, I think Christine, you gave me an answer to the create a capital, the fourth bullet, fifth bullet, create a capital projects website. My question was, is this separate from the town website, but it's gonna be part?
No, it's within.
So that, that particular question, you can just erase, that's fine, just the way it is.
And for anybody interested, is currently being built out, and it's on the facilities page, and Ben is doing an incredible job of populating with pictures of all the projects that we are currently working on.
And then that last bullet, I just, basic rule around action items, you're usually better off starting with the verb. So I just chose that one. We good? Goal three? Goal three hardly had anything. Yeah, on first page of goal three, I just added, I'm, I'm, this is probably a personal hypersensitivity, when we talk about children, and we have a town with, I, I don't think fifteen-year-olds and up are children, they're young adults. And calling them children just before they go to colleges, probably. Although I will say, the University of Vermont sent me a letter when my son was at UVM, asking me to advise my child to act responsibly, responsibly for the midnight naked bike ride, which is apparently a longstanding tradition in Burlington around idols. He did refer to my son at the time, who's in college as a child. That was kind of funny. We gotta, so we can go beyond that page, to the next, second page of goal three. And Pete, you agreed with the thing that I added, exploring support opportunities to leverage the new school construction. So Christine, in light of the discussion we just had, that bullet, explore support opportunities to leverage the new school construction project to support the development of a facility, to support Parks and Rec department programs. That's subject to, I think at this stage in this conversation, that's subject to the schools and/or Parks and Rec making an argument that they don't want to do that. This was, I threw this in here more because I don't know, given the pushback on the parcel B, I don't see a path forward, an easy path forward in the foreseeable future for a Parks and Rec facility, other than, that's why I put it there. It may be that they don't want to do that, and they should feel perfectly comfortable saying, we don't like that, get rid of it. And we've gotten the answer from the people that have most at stake.
Well, then Steve Callahan, from the chair of the warrant committee, suggested that the school building committee explore adding a Park and Rec facility, if Park and Rec is interested. And that makes sense to me.
Right.
Well, I think we need to hear from Park and Rec as elected officials, and I think that, that should be coming shortly.
Yep.
So just, I do have a comment, when we look at increased youth involvement impaired leadership prevention, part of this, and mind, I don't have kids, so take this.
Where are you reading from?
The same page you guys are on, but I'm just, second page, you jumped to the end.
Second, second bullet.
Yeah, second bullet, you jumped to the end, I took, we didn't get it. I mean, where do the parents come into play here? Like, what are we, where, where a lot of this, and I'm not knocking the alignment with action plans for prevention grants and club offerings focused on promoting healthy behaviors, but a lot of this has to do with parenting, right? And what's happening in the house? So are we doing anything that's going, okay, we're hitting the house, and also we're hitting the kids when they're at school, versus just dumping everything at school, but not bringing it back home to mom and dad?
I think that's a, Kathy McDonald has drafted this section, so I think that's a conversation we can have with Kathy.
Okay, okay. And then, so, and this one here, this next one, provide housing for Medfield adults who live, who can live independently with assistance. Identify one or more site, one or more sites within town to support a group home. So technically, we did that, right? We found a place where Habitat for Humanity technically would work. Now, I understand the neighbors were concerned, because it's a very having flood zone, but I, I can tell you.
Habitat wasn't a group home, though.
No, but let me get to the point where that, that was, that's a town-owned piece of property, right? If that doesn't work for Habitat, I can tell you, Carrie McCormick did a lot of work with going through all the different sites that the town owns, what's buildable, what works, the reason that the Habitat lot worked, because it wasn't far from the rail trail, so which brought it close to the, the schools, and to the Kingsbury Club, with the rail trail being there. So I mean, some of this is already being done. So I, I'm gonna look at identify one or more sites, who, it's, that's been done, so.
Well, I don't think, for a group home, sites for a group home?
So group home would not go where, where Habitat could have been built?
Right.
Because of zoning?
No, just because.
Zoning doesn't apply to group homes.
It's just the, it's, what I understood from Maria is that the site that's down near Colonial Road, her assessment, when we had, when I had the phone call with the Habitat for Humanity people, I, I raised the issue of also the, the land we have on, you know, the Hinkley Land by Garrison Path. And I think we, I have to hear more back, certainly, about the feasibility of both those sites. But the Garrison Path issue has to do with the fact that, I guess it has to be a septic system, because it's not gonna hook up into sewer. And then because it has to go through the town's easement, that's gonna be a rather tricky driveway. But in any event, that's not a smart place to put a group home.
Right.
In the middle of the woods, you know, two miles out of town. In a lot of ways, the Colonial Road location, aside from the fact that I don't think that would support a group home from a, from a size of the site, what Maria said is the issues there have a lot to do with environmental.
It's in, it's in a wetlands.
Yeah, so you're, you're, you're pushing the envelope. I don't, I don't think either of them is a particularly attractive place for a group home.
And so for a group home, are there, so there's another, there's another piece of property off of Lee Road, up in the kind of the Stagecoach Lee area? Because Affordable Housing Trust, Carrie brought, like, I think there were nine pieces of property in town, right? And then we looked at, it's technically Surry Lane, but people refer to it as Colonial.
Yep, yep.
Because of its location, you're back, you're right, you're right on the rail trail, blah, blah, blah. So when we look at that, is, is a, is it a lot size minimum now that we're, we're trying to define? If you're saying group home?
Group home is exempt from local zoning, so it could go on any parcel, basically.
It was small as an acre.
Okay.
It's a, given that it's already pushing the boundaries on some of the environmental issues, I, I, that doesn't look to me to be an ideal group home. But part of, part of where I'm coming from with a group home is, I would think a group home ideally, this is not the case on Hospital Road, so we have a group home that doesn't meet this, but I would think ideally, you'd want a group home that's within reasonable striking distance of the center of town.
It depends on the, on the group that you're servicing. The group home up at the hospital, those people never seem to leave the building, so that it doesn't matter that they're not near the downtown. But if, if they're more capable people that are out and about, ideally, and a lot of them wouldn't be driving, so it'd be perfect to have those people in the downtown.
And I, I guess I had kind of assumed we were more looking at a group. What started me was Suzanne Sino. And I'm, I'm sympathetic to a parent who has, and perhaps Denise Garlick would be another person, that's the same thing, where you have a child that is capable of living independently with help, you know, and, and you as a parent have to deal with the fact that chances are very high, you won't survive your child. So somewhere, you're not gonna be there, and you've got this child, and there's no place that you know for sure your child can go and get the help that they need, that would allow them to have a, a good independent life.
So Newton Thompson would be, if we're gonna do this, we need to hone in on him, because he spent, he's worked with Suzanne quite a bit, right? So they, we tried with the Affordable Housing Trust group, for Trinity, working with Trinity, to see could, would there be one of those buildings where we could attempt to have X number apartments, and have a floor area? So obviously, Newton has done a ton of work with this. It's not something new, it's just a matter of, are we gonna act on it?
Yep. So I think it stays in anyway, it's, okay. I think we can go to the next, goal four. I think goal four was the place that, that highlighted section you see from me, that I, I outlined open space areas in red. The only issue that I had on that was that it struck me that goal four, which is retention of unique character and identity, mapped for me onto historic and recreational things, the open space mapped better onto goal five, which was the environmental stewardship. So I'm not trying to get rid of it, it just seems it was in the wrong section for what we're trying to do. Pete, you had the question, the reference to a facilities department, are we creating one? I think the answer to that is yes.
So, yes, we, well, we have, there are two separate things. We have a facilities department that deals with the buildings, but in last year's budget, we presented to you the start of the grounds division in the DPW. And we have started that, looking to expand on that this year.
Right. I didn't see any other comments on that one. This, oh, let me, let me go to the action items. First bullet, review building lease agreements with historic groups. I put the, I put the question in parentheses, for what purpose? But I actually did that just to have a conversation. I think the reason for that purpose is that we have some groups, like the Medfield Historical Society, that when they got the building that they're in right now, next to the library, basically signed a lease that said, and we'll take on the full responsibility for maintaining this town building. I don't think, given that the original gift that they were given was permanent space in the town library, and they didn't have any building maintenance obligations with that, but then when they got moved out, they were given this building, which perhaps was a nicer building, you know, in that it's discreet. But then suddenly, you have volunteers who are trying to do things in town around preserving the history of the town, and we're saying, well, you could do that, but in order to do that, you also have to raise all these funds to replace roofs periodically. And, and I think we at least need to revisit that kind of an agreement. I think the Dwight Derby House is another one that's gonna be like that. And I'm not trying to set up the op, you know, an option for all these groups to say, yeah, the town can just take over everything. But I do think we should relook and make sure that what we're putting, the burden we're putting on volunteers who are trying to do the actual thing that the facility's purpose was created for, don't get dragged down into capital improvements.
Yeah, I, I think we have some responsibility for the maintenance of those assets as town assets.
What's happening with Lowell Mason House?
I don't know, that's not a town-owned.
That's not town-owned, that's privately owned, okay.
And see, the trick is, that, like with Lowell Mason, we didn't choose to buy that, and we're free and clear.
We just keep the land, yeah.
And you have those dedicated volunteers who are taking care of that. We knew that the town, if, if the town understood at the time we acquired any historic property, that it was a hundred percent on the town, my guess is the town would choose to acquire less historic property.
Right.
If a hundred percent of the burden of operating that property fell on, on the town. So I'm, I'm looking for a balance point here. I'm not suggesting that this is just, these are great volunteers, why should they have to raise money to keep things going? It's, the town's actually owning maybe more, you know, we, we might have looked at selling some things to people that wanted to buy them if we weren't gonna preserve them as a town asset.
Dwight Derby was kind of a perfect storm that came together at the time.
Right.
So I'm gonna throw, I'm not trying to cause controversy here, but Lowell Mason isn't that far from Hinkley Pond, right? So, so I don't know what they're doing with that. Would there be any possibility that Parks and Rec could explore a building like that, since it's not far from the center of town?
It's not our building, though.
No, but I mean, would, would the people that own it be, would be, I have, I have no idea.
I think they had their own, I wish that also backed into a transaction.
Yeah. And they're, they're trying to renovate the, you know, if you're trying to historically, if you're trying to restore a historic building.
They are, okay, I didn't know.
Parks and Rec might not be the best current activity, unless, unless it's just office space. Then maybe there is an angle to get money from the town to go toward Lowell Mason in exchange for letting Parks and Rec be there, but that's more of an.
I don't want to cause any controversy, I'm looking at, but if it's there and they're looking for money in the space.
I think it's for a music use, more passive, because they've done studies on wood in the building, and taken it back to a certain age.
Okay.
Yep. Okay. So that was that, point on that. So I think that page we're done with, we can go to goal five. I think there was some stuff here. Let me see. You, you made some notes here, and although it was all semantics, I actually think there's an important thing to keep in mind here. So Pete, you had a couple of comments on my insertions here.
So you and I seem to be at cross purposes. I, I was trying to pare all the wording down and make it as lean as possible, and you were adding boards everywhere.
Yeah, well, I'm trying to, yeah, well, that's fair. And, and to that point, it's possible that some of the, I wasn't worried about holding my words back, I was just trying to get my ideas down. It's possible that some of my words, which were driving toward being more specific and concrete, perhaps some of those words, if they survive, should be in the action items descriptions, rather than the strategies. And that, that's entirely possible. I, mostly I was trying to get to, like, for instance, that third bullet, address climate action. I have no idea what that means. So I was trying to get more specific, because address climate action, I don't know, I turn the lights off, and, you know, I don't, I don't burn leaves when I'm not supposed to, and I guess I'm addressing climate action, so.
I think that's a, that's a holdover from the last plan.
Yeah, yeah. But that, that, that's why I added, that's why I did what I did there. I'm sure there's better words.
And, and we do have a climate action plan that has been, that the town has.
Yeah, it's not a plan, though. It's just a, it's a philosophy document, I've been saying that for years.
Yep.
Did you about say support climate action?
Yeah, I mean, well, that's, that's actually what, that's what the article that was passed at town meeting said, is that we would support the state's efforts to be, you know, zero carbon by twenty fifty. The state and its goals has a, has an escape hatch that says, well, either we're gonna get there, or we're gonna buy offsets. So even the state, when it first wrote those goals, wasn't, in my view, confident that they were gonna get there. And I, everything that's come out since then only causes me to be more skeptical. So, well, I think we said we were gonna support the state, that's good. Yeah, some of those. Yeah, some of those other words, Pete, you might, like the, I said, develop open space management and protection plans. I don't know whether you need to say to preserve the environmental quality of the town's open spaces when we're in the environmental stewardship section. So there's probably some words that could go away. I'm good for the next page, if you guys are?
Where are you at, are you at?
I'm now on the next to last page, so it's second page of goal five.
Okay.
Starts with vulnerability plan. So Pete, you said make the developed specific plans to address the town's most significant vulnerabilities, separate bullet, but my problem is that the vulnerability plan isn't, it doesn't say anything. I'm looking for the verb that goes in front of vulnerability.
I think we have a vulnerability plan, we certainly did have a charrette, and I just remember that it was all about the flooding.
No, we have, we have a municipal vulnerability plan.
So I asked Christine, so the bullet, the box underneath that first line, pursue grant funding for update of MVP, in parentheses, I said, why do we want to do this? What are we doing with the plan we already have? And Christine pointed out that because that plan is five or six years old, I guess the expectation is the town will update that plan. The reason I put that comment in there, though, is if we already have a vulnerability plan, then the idea that our plan and our action plan is to develop the plan, so that's, we're going to continue to plan to plan. I was pushing to say, oh, we've got the vulnerability plan, what are we doing? You know, what impact, what significance is that vulnerability plan already having? Then I think Christine, you said, well, we're supposed to update it, so I'm okay with that, but I'm still saying, but where's the action?
Yeah, let me work on that, how to separate those two.
So I think you and I are in agreement on direction, Pete, perhaps not on semantics.
Yeah, a lot of my comments were semantic ones, I know. As I say, I was trying to make it shorter.
And then down on the, that make climate considerations part of all, you wrote, okay, I'm not sure what your note there is, Pete.
Okay with my edit.
What edit, what edit did you make? I don't see your, I don't see your edit.
Oh, I took out the words all relevant. Make climate consideration part of decision making.
Oh.
Not just all relevant decision making.
Well, yeah, my biggest issue was all, because I don't, I didn't know what that means, but making, make climate considerations part of decision making, I'm okay with that, you can just get rid of all relevant. It's, for me, it's still fuzzy. If we, if, it's fuzzy if we have a deliberate intent about where we know where we want to make those, we want to introduce that. Now, we've done some around fleets, the fleet decisions, so it's not like we haven't done that, but if there's other places that we should be doing it, I just wasn't sure what we were saying there. If we keep it fuzzy, we can keep it fuzzy, that's all right. Plus, that's an easy edit for you. Let's see, let's see, raise awareness of non-native pests. Yeah, you were just, so the only comment I'd make on your changes, Pete, is you were focused on living insects. And I actually think a lot of our invasive, we ought to include invasive plants, and I'm not hung up on which plants get listed, but it's also plants. I don't think so far it's fish or anything else. Okay. Let's see. Down at the bottom, just to, I did have a.
The private wells?
Yeah, so there's two bullets at the bottom. Work with DPW to designate and plant seed pollinator perennial and annual wildfly areas as appropriate. I don't think that's a DPW job. So I don't mind having somebody designate and plant seed, or work on promoting plant seed pollinators, I don't think it's DPW, so.
So the question is, DPW are the ones that have the tools to do that. I was watching the DPW do mowing along North Street this morning, in that area that where Billy McCarthy made it like 150 feet wide, that boulevard that we have by the memorial school. And the, there was a, DPW had a tractor that had an arm that was controlled hydraulically with a cutter at the end, and they were just able to mow the slope going down into the wetlands there, and, you know, they have that type of equipment. We've given them good tools so that they can do good stuff.
That's not the piece, so I would agree with that physical operation stuff. I was reacting to, DPW doesn't have expertise in what should go into a pollinator garden.
Oh, yeah.
So it's a nature's continuum kind of, so the real driver there should be, I think, the people coming up with the concepts for where pollinator gardens should go, and what should go into those pollinator gardens that's appropriate for the location they're being put. The idea that DPW can help with the construction, that, I'd be fine with that, I just, I was thinking this had more to do with pointing the direction and coming up with the concepts.
There's a man, Ken Colner, I think is, I think is his name, he lives down on Stagecoach, and he raises all kinds of pollinators and seeds, and he's the one that did the garden at the intersection of the rail trail and Harding Street, by West Mill there. And it's, I mean, he knows all about this stuff. There's some other people in town that know a lot about it, too, so I think there's plenty of expertise, but we need the, I think the DPW to do the work.
So that ties into the next bullet.
If somebody needs to plow the ground.
So my question is that, but not on private property? So I think that that's the differentiation, are we talking about designating, planting, seeding, pollinator, perennial and annual wildflowers on public property or private property? Because I would say no to the private property.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, yeah, no, you can't be going private property.
You know, my next bullet down, the question I had, encourage sustainable landscaping and gardening, including reduce usage of pesticides, fertilizer, native plant species. I kind of see that, and the pollinator garden is kind of a body of expertise and compatible actions that all are geared toward, you know, make, improving the environment in that sense. So my question on there is, you know, who's actually doing the work? Do we go through the Sustainable Medfield? Perhaps the Medfield Garden Club? You know, it's, the real question is, where's the expertise? Ken might be a great, I think, I suspect he is, but.
He has no Cloris County.
Is, unless we want to write him in by name into our town goals, it's like there's, there should be a mechanism, I think there's an interest, one or more interested groups that would be, would like to have a role there.
Let me, let me take a little time and see if I can work with that language, yeah.
Okay.
Just to go back, Concom's putting forward, apparently a town meeting article on the private wells. And Medway is already ahead of the curve, they're holding hearings on doing that.
They're doing the same thing.
Well, they have, yeah.
To regulate the private well extractions.
So Concom here is going to be holding hearings to.
Well, they've got a draft bylaw, I think.
But with what measure of public support for that draft bylaw?
Well, I know, from listening to the Concom meeting last week, they are reaching out, they've reached out to the town to get all the residents that have wells, and they're going to reach out to them.
176, I think it is.
And here's the concern, I think there might be people with wells that the town's not aware of, right? So it's really making sure that everyone who owns one, whether it's legit or not, is made aware that there could be something voted on at town meeting that says, we don't know what it's going to say. Is it, you can't, if it's where tier two, you have to treat it like tier two, or if we have gone as far as four, or is it going to be grandfather, anyone effective May 2nd, 2026? You know, nothing applies to you, it's only new ones going in. I have no idea which way they're going.
And I don't have a well, so I don't have a personal position on it, but I would think we would work hard, if we do anything in this area, we'd work hard to make sure that people that do have wells have had input into this whole thing.
Because, you know, just from what I did a couple of years ago, I mean, mathematically, they're not, they're not in the lead here. There's 36, there's 48, there's 72, whatever it may be. So it's, that, I don't want the decision to be stacked against them purely because of that. That's why I think the communication, which I didn't do back then, and then, you know, Mother Nature kind of pushed back and wasn't as big a concern. I don't have a problem with Concom, I said to Deb, like, you can do it, just make sure you communicate, because it won't go over well on the floor.
Private letter going out to 176 private well owners.
So, the, I think most of them are using it for watering, so they're pulling water out of the aquifer, and they're putting it right back down to the ground where it presumably would go back down to the aquifer. It's a little different than when you're flushing it into the sewer system, I would think. But, don't have, don't have a position, just would like to see a sound process, yeah. Really saying, can you, can we get past this first agenda item?
No, yeah, we do have some, I just want to make sure we're last on the, I think you and I fixed the question on the last page about supporting Concom in safeguarding Medfield's natural resources, but we had a question about that going into goal five, but that is.
Yeah, yeah, this is all good, yeah, this is goal five, so.
So that one's fine.
So that one's fine.
And then if we're all set with going through those, Chris has a question she'd like to ask.
I had one more thing on the goals, which is that I wonder if it wouldn't behoove us to take a look at what we spend on consulting services? A lot of town boards, rather than having a town engineer, we hire an engineer for each project, and I think it might behoove us to take a look at what we're spending per year for all of these consultants, whether it's engineering or legal. I mean, every time I see a, this is ZBA hearing, Paul Harvey's there getting paid.
But he's being paid through the MHP grant.
Okay.
Yeah, and a lot of the consultants are being paid for by the applicants who do peer reviews of their projects. But some of the engineering work, we'd happy to.
I think it behooves us to take a look at that sort of thing, and then, that's the perfect sort of thing, if we, if we think that it makes sense to have a town engineer, maybe we could share a town engineer with some other towns or something, if we don't need a full-time one.
Not a position most people share, most people bring them on full-time, but we'd be happy to put that analysis together.
Yeah.
It'd be useful to see the numbers, the best thing would be to know how much is going out on contract by major categories, so, you know, legal services, like you're talking about, is different than engineering services, and maybe there's some ways, engineering services even could be, needs to be, engineering services for the water treatment plant or the sewer plant is probably different than engineering services around intersection design or road design.
Right, for example, we, a peer review engineer you could have on staff in the DPW, but you wouldn't, that person would not be able to redesign Weston 27, so you're still going to have to send some of those out.
Right.
Yeah.
But that'd be useful information to have, and that might even also be helpful at some point here, sooner or later, presumably, when the state hospital project, the Trinity project gets going, we're going to have to have an owner's project manager, and so we have some issues around, we're likely to see the need to have some engineering, in-house engineering, or maybe that's even contract, too, but.
You think about what we just talked about as one of the goals, when we hire, it's a long-term cost, right? And if these aren't going to be projects that are ongoing, a contract's actually an easy way.
Town engineers are generally involved with streets, ways, infrastructure, that sort of thing.
And peer review, yeah.
Okay.
We're happy to pull that together, we can add that into here.
Pete, you, did you have one, no, that was the one thing you had, right? Okay. So we're good on that, and what was Chris's?
Yeah, Chris would like to talk. You're live now, Chris.
Put her hand up.
I know.
We put her.
She put her hand up for a while, I was not ignoring you, Chris.
Yeah, don't let her talk when her hand is up, that's rude.
Just trying to get them through goal five.
Okay. I had a question, I'm just looking for a little bit of clarity around process on the, on the goals and getting input from others on the goals. If a goal relates to, say someone has a recommendation for a goal that applies to another area, say the planning board or historical commission, would you like those individuals to go to those groups first to discuss the goals, or do you want to hear those as part of your own process? I think it might be helpful to get a little bit of direction on that.
My immediate reaction to that is it complicates it to the point where people might get discouraged about sharing the thoughts. I think it's, you know, clearly anything that we put into this document's going to get shared with the planning board, the ZBA, and all the other boards in town, so they'll certainly have, I would assume that the other boards and committees will have thoughts about this, and will hear about them, so. Whether it goes to them first and then goes in here, I don't know that it matters.
I would think you may want to reach out to boards and commissions.
That's already, that's already part of the process, that's not what Chris is asking.
I think we have a controversial issue, rather than having blindsided.
Right.
So a matter of just morale and all, and common courtesy.
Yeah, yeah.
That's been part of the process since the beginning. What Chris is asking is different, if somebody has a comment related to a different board, should they go to that board or come to the select board first? That's different than what we're circulating.
President?
So back to my original point that I've repeated on multiple occasions, this is a town goals document, this is not the select board goals document. So it's not an issue of, oh, this is the select board's goals, and then the planning board will have a set of goals, and the ZBA will have a set of goals. The point of this is to have this be, the select board has been the driver of this conversation, clearly. It's actually been the driver of this conversation since I first got elected to the Board of Select, been nine years ago, almost nine years ago. But the point, the purpose of it is to capture the collective thought of the town about what the goals for the town should be. So to Chris, Chris, to your point, my first reaction was, if somebody has a goal which is so narrow and specific as to have it be a goal for the planning board, if that's at a tactical level, it's probably appropriate to share the thoughts with the planning board, because I'd be surprised to see a real narrow, specific, concrete goal for a particular board show up as a standalone item here, other than like we talked about, support Concom's efforts for, you know, environmental, but I'd be surprised to see that. So I would kind of say, if somebody, if somebody has an idea for an action, use your judgment. You can send it to us, and it's a broad, you know, it's a broad goal, if it's something more concrete, talk to the board.
I would give you an example, if you want.
Sure.
And that's that historically, the ZBA, zoning board of appeals, had most special permit granting authority in this town. That was because of an old philosophy that the planning board was in bed with developers, and only the ZBA could protect the town's interests. So it was set up that way, even though in the bigger planning context, the general sense is the ZBA should have authority over specific narrow buildings, individuals, whatever, and larger projects, for instance, if we need a special permit, generally the planning board has the resources and the background to better deal with. So over a period of time, we transitioned, but there was communication between the boards as to what the existing circumstances were and where it was recommended to go, as opposed to simply saying, thanks for all your work, but we're just going to give it to this board because we don't think it's appropriate that you have.
So let me give you, maybe, maybe give a little bit more clarification. So, so there's, I'm not going to mention the particular board, but there's a board that has made a particular goal very, they've talked about it a lot, and it's, and it's about a bylaw change that they feel is important, but they really just haven't had the bandwidth or the resources to be able to make much progress on it. I feel like if this select board knew that this was important to the community, maybe there would be a way to give this particular board some reinforcement, to allow them to make some progress on moving forward on something that I know that they care about, because they've talked about it. It's just kind of fallen by the wayside, just because they're out of bandwidth, and you know, they're volunteers. So, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, is that something that we can bring to the select board and say, you know, as part of the goals for the town, this is something that we can maybe try and get a little bit more support on, maybe it's through a grant application, whatever, but I just, I feel bad for this particular board because, but this, there's a, you know, one topic that's been a lot of discussion, and they just haven't, they haven't been able to move forward on it very much. So, and I think it'll be, it's something important to the community.
Let me, let me try and answer out and see if Eileen and Pete would agree. I don't think it's our intent for anybody in town who has an idea that they would like to be incorporated into the, this town goals document, to feel like they are constrained from communicating with the select board, or that they're constrained from communicating directly with any town department or board that we have. directly with any town department or board that we have. If you're, if someone was in doubt and felt like, well, gee, I don't know whether the board that I think is involved, you know, is in a position to deal with this even though they want to, I, I think we would be open to having it communicated, yeah, or to communicate to the town administrator, we certainly would work, to anything brought to our attention, if we determine it's not really something that we should be handling, we would certainly be supportive of directing that to the town board or department, and if it's necessary to get select board help but, from that, you know, if, to get help for that department or board, I think we would be predis, if it make, if it's a good goal, we'd be predisposed to try and help facilitate that, so. I don't know, if that answers your question, Chris, I don't think anybody should be looking at this as a constraint, there's not a hoop that people have to jump through in order to get through, the, the way I'm looking at it is, formally, we've had a lot, you know, we've had a multi-week, maybe almost multi-month request out, general call to the public, if you've got stuff for us, send it in, and a few people have. We have a formal request out to the departments and the boards, and they, I guess, would like to kind of see this draft before they react, which we, looks like we're about to have, so we'll do that. I'm guessing there might be a, a second call out to the public that says, okay, we've progressed this to where now we have kind of the draft that's awfully close to what we think we're going to adopt, last chance. Those are the formal steps we're taking to solicit inputs, but I don't think it's our intention to restrict anyone from having inputs at any point in this process, whether we've asked for them or not.
But Chris, if it's, if it's a committee that has a, has a bandwidth issue that wants to bring something forward, I'd be happy to meet with them and see what we can do to, you know, to get them the support they need.
Okay.
The other thing that I would.
It's more for me, it's about being, you know, being respectful of everyone's own purviews and their time commitments, and not wanting anybody to feel like, you know, that, that's not respected, you know, and then that's not the case. And I, and I also, you know, don't want people to feel hesitant about bringing something forward at the same time, you know, on, on similar types of things, and make sure that the select board is inviting that, you know.
I think what, what Gus just said is spot on, I mean, we, I don't think we've ever, at least in my four years sitting here, we've ever made anybody feel like they couldn't bring something forward, and like, hey, you know, we're in a bind, we need the following, could you help, I mean, I, I think we've had people come to us, so, yeah, I would, I would, I would encourage you to either come to us or, or talk with Christine.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Chris, Chris, the other thing that I would suggest is that you, as a resident who is hugely knowledgeable about our town, because you probably go to more town board meetings than anybody else in town, that you should not feel shy about making the suggestion yourself.
Yeah, okay.
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 I mean, we don't have any pride of authorship or ownership of this process, I think we just want to get to the best result possible for the town and the town residents, so.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks for your input that you, you did send us already.
Thank you.
All right, we've gotten as far as I think we're going to get on that tonight.
Okay.
Going once, going twice, going three times, okay. Now you're going to see us make some progress here, we get.
Chinks us here, buddy.
Number of, number of action items, first one, board and committee appointments to appoint Mike Pettit and Ja Shafel, and apologies if I've pronounced, mispronounced any part of that name, to the Medfield Energy Committee.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye. Okay, that's approved. Second is, vote to authorize the town administrator to cancel the beta contract for Route 27 West Street in preparation for going out to bid for the remainder of the project to ma, to meet MAS DOT federal procurement guidelines. You want to comment briefly?
Yeah, just a little, a little context on this, about a year ago, when we met with MAS DOT, they informed us that the $1.3 million that we had received in the federal earmark could not be used for design, we would have to use our Chapter 90 money for that, which we did, and the board approved it. We met with them late this summer, and they said, there's been a change in the guidelines regarding that federal money, and that can now be used for design.
Huh.
I know, it's always changing. It's very similar to the ARPA project and process we went through, so, but in order to do that, we met Massachusetts procurement rules for going out and to bid on the beta contract, now we need to follow federal procurement, and we need to do a full procurement, and MAS DOT wants to be a part of that and review that contract, so Ben has already put a draft together, we'll send that, he's actually out this week, when he gets back, we'll send that off to MAS DOT to take a look, and we'll go out to bid.
And Beta understands this, so they're not pushing back, saying they've canceled anything?
Nope, they, they thought it was fine, they're excited for the town to be able, obviously they're going to bid on the project as well, but they thought it was a great opportunity to be able to use this money for the design and save the Chapter 90 money we have for other projects, so.
Okay.
No, they were very supportive of it, and glad that the federal government and MAS DOT had changed their mind, so.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye, okay. The third item is the vote to sign the contract with Weston and Sampson Engineers for UV system installation design and bidding services at the wastewater treatment plant for $67,000 to be paid by ARPA. This was the contract we deferred from last week, and Mark, I think that.
I've had no further, I don't know what happened.
We're all set, they took out the comment that you had said couldn't be in, it was actually ready to go last week, and I apologize, that was not communicated to everybody, so.
Okay.
It was that last week.
There's no lingering.
Nope, should be all set.
Concerns, okay.
Yeah, we're in, we're in a vicious cycle with engineering firms where their insurance companies say, well, you're either going to have to pay an extra premium, we're not going to cover some particular obligation, so they come back to the procurement municipality, and they say, oh, we've got to take this language out or whatever, because our insurance company won't cover it, or doesn't want it, and it's like, that's between you and your insurance company, the town needs to be protected, so that's.
All right, motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye, okay, that's approved.
So Chris, this is 67,000 for engineering services, and then the actual UV installation's going to be a lot more, I assume.
Correct.
Yeah, all right.
And they, and we've already spent the money to get the equipment.
To get the equipment, we have the equipment.
Buying it was one thing, this is, this is design, and then installation. Next, we have request approval of a rent increase on affordable units at 67 to 71 North Street, six, unit 67-1B, lease expires on August 31st of '26, and the request is to increase the rent from $2,250 a month to $2,300, so a $50 increase. Second unit, 71-1D, lease expires February 28th, 2026, increasing the rent from $2,450 to $2,500, another $50 increase. Unit 71-1E, lease expires May 31st, 2026, request to increase the rent from $2,100 to $2,150, another $50 increase. And unit 71-3F, lease expires on July 31st, 2026, requesting to increase the rent from $2,250 to $2,300. So all four of these units going up $50 on the monthly rent, and I, I don't know, is there any, there was, sometimes when this happens, we, there's nobody.
No, this is, this is from Bob Relly, and they are, they are all between a two and a 2.3% increase, which is less than, less than the 5%, so this is our annual approval.
Good.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Aye, okay, that carries.
And I am withdrawing number five. Sadly.
Sadly. Okay, we won't tell people what it is that's being withdrawn, because it would have been so great, but legal restrictions being what they are, it had to go away, people were, people were going to have, no, people were going to have just way too much fun at something, and we don't want to.
We'll have a lot of food.
It'll be so much fun, but we're, we're, it's still going to be fun.
We're watching our dollars, I have no problem with this.
Yep, yep, okay, so we have two items on the consent, we now have two items on the consent agenda. First one is a request for a one-day beer wine license for the outdoor movie night at Rocky Woods Reservation from 8:00 to 12:00 PM on October 17th, and the second one is a request to post signs advertising Medfield Music Association's upcoming Swing Dance Night fundraiser, and our wreath and bulbs sale at the usual loca, that's two different events, right? It's not, it's not swing dance and selling wreaths and bulbs at the same time, okay, two different events, sale at the usual, I just, you know.
Mistletoe.
Yeah, yeah, it's a swing dance. At the usual locations from October 10th to the 24th.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye aye.
Do we have something defined as our usual locations? Another reason I say that is that.
Yeah, we do.
Define the bylaw.
Is it, okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's on, it's on the website when they request them as well.
Oh, good, okay, only, I saw a sign up the other day, and I know we didn't approve it, and I couldn't remember where it was, and I was like, okay, that's an interesting spot for someone just to freewheel, put up a promotion sign.
If, if you see that, just let us know, we pull them down.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the relevant question there was, are we sure the people who say they want to put signs up in the usual location?
Know what they're doing. Exactly. I'm not, I'm thinking this group was a pretty legit group, it definitely wasn't one of our usual locations.
We, we, we give them their approval, and they know where they go, they can go.
All right. I don't see anything for gifts, don't see anything for citizen comment. Okay, and meeting minutes, no town administrator updates?
You are going to get slammed, and we are, we are so close to being done.
Ugh.
Just wanted to say, fantastic event at the fire open house on Saturday, it was really great to be a part of it, and what was even better is we took a walk down the street, looking for cookies, and while we were out, seeing the little kids running around with their fire helmets on, leaving the fire station was just incredible, so just congratulations to the entire fire department, chief to king, he promised us that night, he interviewed with us, that he would bring back the community open house with the chicken barbecue, we got to have lunch together, it was really fantastic, so, just congratulations on a, on a great day.
It was a long day for them, 10 to 4.
I think you may see next year it's 10 to 2.
Okay, they may say, I drove by at like 3:30, I'm like, oh my God, that's a long one for those guys.
Yeah, I think we're going to see it a little smaller, but just a great event.
It's all the early kids, the little kids are so early, so.
And us.
They made a hit with some neighborhood kids.
It was, it was a tremendous event, yeah.
And on, on that point, tip of the hat to Chris Potts for her Medfield Insider, I did watch the video of the fire, the sprinkler and non-sprinkler, and I, I didn't even jump ahead like she said I could, I, I literally watched the full eight minutes.
I watched the whole thing, yes.
It's not hard, it's a pretty fast-moving video, and it's, even in video, as opposed to being there and probably feeling the heat on your face, it was, it was pretty cool.
Yeah, it was, it was a great event.
The point where all the smoke in the top of the one without sprinklers turned into a fiery inferno is kind of fun to watch.
I didn't realize that they encourage residential homes to have sprinklers, I always think of it as like having an apartment, have it in, in a hotel, but they were like, yeah, you could have it in your home, and that, like, look at the difference, I was like, jeez, didn't know that.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. Our next meeting dates, we have one more meeting in October on the 21st, two meetings in November on the 4th, and then the 18th, and two meetings in December on the 2nd, and then the 16th. Select board member reports, Eileen.
All right, so I, too, attended the fire station open house, it was fantastic, as we were just saying, like, great turnout, tons of, I showed up right around 11:15, so I just missed the whole kickoff of Jaws of Life, but there was a really good crowd in the back watching that.
Yeah, that was.
And then, you know, then they kicked off the chicken barbecue, and I actually had a chance to see the Eagle Scout, Jack.
Jack Gargamel.
Yeah, Jack Gargamel was there showcasing his Eagle Scout project, Stop the Bleed kits, and he was telling me the story, like, how they're really focusing on youth sports, because Buddy was playing hockey and had his skate go right over his arm, and, you know, if they, the group that treated him, if they didn't have what they had, easily would have lost the limb. So, really good to see him there, I know he's actively trying to do fundraising.
He raised a tremendous amount of money that day.
So was selling the T-shirts, did that go towards his fund?
I believe that was going to.
I bought one of those, and I'm going to buy another one, because it shrunk nicely, because I thought it was going to be huge, and I just washed it the other night, I'm like, oh, this is really comfy, this, this is a black one, I didn't care, but Jackie, have me on the hook, I got another one coming.
He was a, he was great.
Yeah, that was awesome. And then, I sat in the MMA post-training, the chief from Norwood gave some very interesting commentary, in general, it was a really, you know, very positive feedback, he did comment, and I know the chief has commented on this, you know, post does take time from her and others to just, it's, it's significant, and he was talking about, he didn't give exact dollars, but when he was talking about it, I had flashback to Chief Corret talk about it, but it was nice to sit in that. I sat in the school building committee meeting last night, I did tour Pine Hills and Westwood the week before, it's a beautiful school, really nice conversation, the superintendent for Westwood showed up, the new principal for the school was there, nice tour, you know, really candid feedback on things that have worked out well, things that, like, they just, interesting uses of spaces, one of the things they, they talked about was, there's a room off of, we were in a third grade room, the room off of it is for quiet learning and trying to help with kids, but there's no soundproofing, so if you've got a kid that's like, you know, constantly looking around, it was interesting, it's like, okay, that's a learning, like, you probably bump that one more over, so that you can still achieve having it close, and so, no knock, it's just, that's, that's just how it played out, so that was really good. And then, this, I've, I've known the Kennedy family since I was in high school, and I played frisbee with their son Peter, super sad news that Mrs. Kennedy passed away yesterday, just super fond memories of the family, and I remember just seeing her at this past Memorial Day parade, like, you can all, you just bank on seeing Mrs. Kennedy, Mr. Kennedy, and the whole crew right along the parade route near 109, and then in the cemetery, so just a, just start thinking of the Kennedy family.
Pete?
I went to the fire department open house and liked it, and bought myself a T-shirt as well, donated to, to the young guy who was trying to do his Eagle project, he's a very well-spoken and poised young man, as he, he sent us a nice email, actually, about his project today. I had office hours last Friday, and my friend and neighbor, Paul Anzillo, who's a longtime telecom engineer, came and talked about double poles, and he thought there was a bylaw where you could, because the problem with the double poles is you need to get all three utilities, the telephone, the, the electric company, and the cable company, to get their wires off of the old pole, so you can get the old pole out of there, and he thought other towns had put in bylaws that required the utilities to get them off in 60 days, I didn't know if that was, so I passed that along to Christine and asked her to post on her town manager website to see if that's real or not, because if it is, we should certainly be doing it. I know that Richard De Sorga had a spreadsheet about the, the double poles, and he, he kept hounding them, and he did make some progress by hounding them. I actually went and took a look at something called Westwood Minute, because I saw that they, it was just a reference on social media about their, their having voted down the fire station in Westwood override a second time, and, and I discovered this thing called Westwood Minute, which is like, like Chris Potts's Medfield Insider, I guess, it's, except they have a website, so, but it's, it's all information about Westwood, and, and I read about their, and it reminded me of the, of the vote that we had where we, we didn't get the second, the Dale Street School redone, and so it, and, but I guess what, what I noticed there was, there was a post about the fact that the taxes, they said the taxes on an average house in Westwood of a million two had doubled in, in the last few years, it wasn't very many years that their taxes had doubled, but I also noted, Chris, that the taxes on their house at a million two was less than my house, which is at a million in Medfield, and I thought, oh, I'm going to move my house to Westwood.
They have a lot more commercial.
Yeah.
See? You heard it here.
And then, and it's not, it's not really a Medfield thing, but it's my thing, I went to a, the 25th anniversary of LaSalle Village, and it's my thing, because I spent 10 years helping LaSalle College build LaSalle Village, and so I take huge pride of ownership in it, and, and I went and saw what they've done, they've actually improved it since I was last there, so that was nice to see, and that's it.
I forgot one, and I'm embarrassed, I've forgotten to do this, I had it in my notes, and it got buried in, I did want to make a recognition for Chris Potts, the Medfield Insider, which we referenced quite a bit, just actually had its five-year anniversary last week, she's got over 2,000 subscribers, and then as of Monday's issue, she's done over 275 of them, and with a click-through, click-through rate of 86%, so it has become quite a nice resource for people that are looking up things, instead of, you know, if they don't want to, you go to the website, and they want to look at their, their Monday or newsletter, but I just wanted to do a quick shout-out for that, with the anniversary being last week.
Okay, I could say, I'm, I'm more aware of what other towns and boards are doing, because, I wouldn't take the time to go to the website, download everybody's agenda and go through it, but she, she has.
Yeah.
And, in distilling those down into those short, you know, sections of her Medfield Insider, I at least know what some of the main topics are that are, and there's always something that surprises me or is of interest to me that some, uh, committee or board has taken on, so.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, I got three things, on the 1st of October, I've been, I'm the Medfield representative on the MBTA Advisory Board. They ho, hold Zoom meetings like once a quarter, so it's not a particularly onerous thing and I listen primarily because the, most of the people that are active on that board are in the communities that have MBTA services to include subway services, so generally speaking, most people there are looking for improvements to their stations or signage improvements or want better service, which sort of isn't a major driver for us. One of the things that was interesting about that though, so, yeah, I think I've said this before, having been more involved with this particular board, I've got a pretty positive opinion of the board's leadership, Philip Eng, who's in charge of the MBTA, uh, and Brian Kane, who's sort of the guy who was the, I think, executive director and works as the leader of the advisory board, they're, they're, the team's trying to do good stuff, they're trying to figure out how to make things work better, they've been bringing in a lot of improvements. Uh, one of the interesting points that they made is, if you're familiar, you're all familiar with the mil, the millionaire surcharge-
Oh, yeah.
-the millionaire tax, um, that brought in last year $2.4 billion in added revenues. And, uh, they were saying that right now, the way that works is about 70% of that goes to education, so that's why we see the $150 per student education aid coming into Medfield, uh, and about 30% goes to the T. So interestingly, the T was talking about how they really need to try to see if there's some way they can get a larger share of that surcharge, surtax, because they have, they have capital expenses, they're, they're still projecting a deficit, uh, they're just, they're just hoping that they pulled out of the dive and they can get back on an even keel, so they have structural issues. Uh, so that was interesting. Then, uh, on the 3rd, uh, Fri, last Friday, I went to the MMA legislative update in Middleborough. Uh, one, one reason I'm glad I went was that they did it at the Middle, Middleborough Town Hall and the town hall has a, effectively an auditorium that they've renovated, looks like there's probably a few places where they have to renovate again, but it's a pretty interesting and cool-looking building, so I was happy to do that. Uh, there were a number of things, I'm not gonna go through all of them, I took some notes, but there were, in this legislative update, there were a bunch of interesting things that were, were brought up. One was that $2.4 billion, much of which showed up as a surprise, they weren't sure in the first year how much was coming in, so they conservatively budgeted and then they wound up getting more, so they wound up a little bit on the, the fat side at the end of last fiscal year. This year, uh, they were saying that that $2.4 billion is now baked into the budget. And so, given the uncertainties about federal funding, you know, I think there's more likely that we will see a financial headwind from the state this coming fiscal year than we're suddenly gonna get another windfall out of some sur, surtax. Uh, there were a couple of things that they talked about that caught my attention and unfortunately I didn't have time to find out about all of them. Apparently, under the Municipal Empowerment Act, there is some sort of OPEB reform that's being included in there, I don't know what that OPEB reform is, uh, but I was certainly curious about it. Um, the environmental bill, they were look, it said, we're, they're looking to exempt high-priority housing projects, so the, the environmental bond bill is a money bill, but then there's these supplemental portions of it, one of which was looking to exempt high-priority housing projects from some environmental permitting requirements. And I'm not sure what that means, uh-
When the attorney chuckles over there, I don't know if that's a good thing.
Yeah.
It's not.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so ba, basically, it sounds like the state is making a priority trade-off between the environment and housing.
Light 40B.
Yep.
Yeah. Um, they, uh, the clean energy citing and permitting, this is one, I don't, I don't have any idea. Draft regulations, they're likely to affect local bylaws once practices are introduced and the comments on that are, are due by October 17th. So I haven't, maybe Christine, you know something about it, I sure as heck didn't, that wasn't on my radar screen and the fact that the state's saying you got till October 17th to tell us what you think of these pending draft regulations, it's like, I have no idea what they were talking about.
I'll send a, MMA sent a, sent an update out, um, I'll send it out to you right now.
Okay. So anyway, if we're, if it's a, if it's problematic, we've got till the 17th to provide feedback. Uh, something I learned that was interest, I hadn't, hadn't thought about this, is a perspective, they are pointing out that part of the issue around the federal funding and the impact it has on state revenue is the fact that so much of state tax law is locked to federal laws. So in other words, the state tax is X percent of what you paid in a particular area for the federal tax. So when the federal tax laws change, if those base components of federal taxes drop, then the, the state's algorithmic state tax associated with it goes down with it. They said that's gonna probably have a negative $650 million impact on the state's revenues this year. So, I thought, I had never thought about that, but it, they're piggy, they call them piggyback provisions.
Yikes.
Uh, so that's, that's got nothing to do with federal funds being pulled back, that's just restructuring, federal tax laws can have that. Uh, they talked about special education, it's pretty clear to me that many towns have not done some of the proactive things I think the school department gets credit for having done here in terms of building things and capabilities in our own schools that will reduce the number of students that are gonna be sent out of district because of special education needs. These folks in a lot of these towns, most of them were on South Shore, they're talking about just the completely unmanageable impact the sped costs are, there's, the, the transportation cost is one piece, but the other piece is paying when they have to send someone out. The, one guy, he might've been from Kingston, was saying, "We have one student who's on a vent who costs the town $400,000 a year."
He, what, he's on a vent, did you say?
Yeah, so in other words, you have a, you have a, a physically constrained student who needs special accommodations to get educated, that they don't have the ability to do it, they send that person out, chances, like, something like that, maybe there's a full-time nurse that goes along with it, but it's, they said, it's, it's a $400,000 impact on their budget.
There's, there's definitions where it would not be education by anybody's definition and you're required to supply it.
So, so the point, the, the MMA rep, uh, his comment was, "Yeah, it's interesting, some towns chose not to do, to spend the money proactively and now what's happening is the cost of not having done that is far greater than the cost they didn't put in." I, I think that the schools get credit and the superintendent gets credit for not doing that. I remember distinctly, I don't know, four years ago or something where we were asked to fund some improvements to the high school, I think, deliberate, specifically to ensure we had some capabilities and I just saw, I think, the before and after picture of doing that or not doing it. Uh, and then the last point that I'll make, this is one I felt good about, is one lady got up and she was talking, she was furious with the state about how the state's interfered with the host community agreements, that those towns, uh, cities, I guess, that agreed to have either marijuana, uh, cannabis dispensaries or like happened here, just a little farther west on 109, the production facilities, then the state came in and said, "Oh, those HCAs and the agreements for payments that you got, uh, they're too punitive to the businesses, so we're gonna negate those." Her comment was, "I drive, when I drive through town, um, I get, I get a contact high from, from the air." Uh, when this came up for us, we deliberately said, "We didn't think Medfield was the right kind of town to, to introduce this. We have such a high percentage of youth in this town, it just seemed to be the wrong message to take that they suddenly see this big industry." Uh, I don't think I've felt so vindicated about a decision in a couple of years as I felt when this, this lady was talking about her fury at not getting the, the money they thought they were gonna get and having to deal with the smell of, uh, I think marijuana production or cannabis production that was infusing the entire town, so I will submit that we dodged a bullet on that one. Uh, and then, the last thing I had, uh, on Sunday, I sat in in the last hour of the community markets, first time I've been to the community market, uh, but Megan Sullivan had asked me to join her and, uh, Katie, it was Katie Blood who were the two, there, there was basically an informational booth at the market for the Medfield community electricity, uh, and so I, I showed up for the last hour, uh, it was, I was happy to see the market. It was a little light on the attendance, I was impressed both with Megan and Katie and their ability to catch people, you know, when you're in conferences and things and there's always the people at the booth, and some people are just really good at reeling someone in, uh, I was really impressed at their skills, they far exceed mine, uh, but there were a couple of good discussions that went along with that. I, uh, because it was a light crowd at the tail end, the people that were selling the homemade dog biscuits next to me, I bought a bag, 'cause I hadn't seen them make any sales, and then I also have two bottles from the Meadery, uh, that was the next guy down who I didn't see making sale, so they're both in my refrigerator and I will be testing out some of the wares of the, uh, of the things that we buy, or we, we authorize to be sold there. That's it.
You, you reminded me of one thing that I had read today, Gus, that, um, the state has created a new online dashboard that is tracking how federal funding cuts are negatively impacting Massachusetts and it's currently listing $3.7 billion due to President Trump and congressional, uh, actions that have come out of Massachusetts, basically.
Is that government or is it state as a whole? In other words, does that include all the university funds or?
I don't know.
Okay.
One quick comment.
And I, I had, I had one more too, is that I, I just wanted to, uh, highlight, in the information, I'll come back to the, in the information packet, the very last thing we had was a handwritten note from a couple of the, uh, basketball team folks, uh, boys that were apparently doing the car wash behind the town hall.
Oh, yeah.
They sent us a thank you note, to my knowledge, it's the, not that I'm looking for thank you notes, anybody, but it's the first time I've been aware of the town getting a thank you note, it's, you know, they really appreciate that, it was a big success, it was a great day for it, made a lot of money. So, uh, I thought it was just, you don't always necessarily figure that, uh, students in town are gonna take the time-
Right, right, as my parents used to say.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Far more polite than I probably was at their age.
So Gus, it does, uh, that 3.7 billion does include, uh, 2.6 billion in NIH and National Science Foundation grant funding?
So, so from a standpoint of state budget, it's not as bad as that first number sounded, but-
Well, it's, it's out of our economy, basically, our economy's taking a massive hit.
Worry about budgets. Too mercenary.
[inaudible]
Yep. Uh, let's see, one Q and A, hold on, let me get it up here. One. There, thanks to, uh, Chris, thanks to Eileen for the kudos, just some clarification, this is from Chris Potts. Uh, "On my end, especially for select board minutes, I wish I had an 86% click rate with Medfield Insider readers who click on articles. That 86% is the usual open rate representing the number of people who open the email." Thanks, Chris. Oh, Chris, once you open Medfield Insider, trust me, you have to read it. So I would say, if that's a rate, it's probably also a pretty reliable indicator, at least for people on the select board, who, who-
Click through.
Take it, go all the way through to the end. All right.